Start the public order, the planning commission regular meeting for September twenty first, twenty twenty three. We'll have to report if you would call in. Here. 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 In your. In your. In your packets, you can have an item two, you can have item not be of the agenda, any revisions to the agenda or not? Things in favor?
Yeah.
Those stuff. Both, not agenda approved. Also in the packet, I mean, item three is approval of the minutes, we have the regular minutes from the August seventeenth, twenty twenty three meeting. Was there any comments or items that we needed to note prior to this? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Both? None, the minutes are approved. Moves us on to item four, which is our first public comment section of the evening. During the public comment section, if you would like to speak, just sit in the room, come up to the microphone, if you're online, raise your hand. Let me get your public comments to three minutes and give us your name and address first, but see that I don't believe we have in uh residents online or any attendees, I'm guessing there's no public comment. There you go. So we'll close the first public comment and move on to old business. The item of old business is the task force, the short-term rental task force verbal update. Uh I don't, Holly, do you want to start or Ryan, would you want to start?
No, I I think your your short-term rental task force chair is up to the task and this will be your last verbal update soon, you're gonna be starting some work.
Yeah. Um, you know, I am thrilled to report that the short-term rental task force has met its commitment to deliver recommendations to the planning commission, um, and city council. Um, recommendations fall into two broad categories, sort of how to tackle some of the, you know, how we run short-term rentals and nuisances, the trash, the, you know, inspections, that kind of stuff. Uh, we had great input from, um, you know, from residents, from, um, you know, the kind of, we had some good input. Um, and the fire department had outstanding input and I think we have some really good recommendations. They're high level, so, you know, planning and and staff will need to, and then the council will need to dig in and sort of, you know, figure out how to make them actionable and and what the appetite is for change, but I think there's some great recommendations. The other area we tackled was, um, kind of neighborhoods and density for for rentals and whether or not to recommend a cap, um, either citywide, residential, or none at all. And there was no consensus among the task force. Um, we had really good discussion, um, strongly held and talked closely, um, from people who think there could be no cap at all. Um, they kind of gave us several options, um, a lottery, citywide cap, no cap, um, and then residential or new residential cap. There was some, um, support for, um, residential, you know, definitely no, but looking at other residential. Um, for that, whether it was by zone or by neighborhood, um, but there was no interest really in caps beyond the. Um, so the report that was in the packet for the short-term rental committee was approved with with four changes. Uh, one, Kevin Golly wanted us to recommend that the city consider outsourcing some of the sort of management of short-term rentals, so that we don't try to do all the testing now. We had, um, a recommendation and that was for my notes on adding some communications, you know, beefing up the website. Um.
Attaching.
Attaching the fire department, um, letter, just because I think it's helpful for both council and the plan to see what the fire department actually sent in versus the kind of recap of it.
And the third was the page seventy seven.
Oh, right, and then Joe, um, Joe Clark, I think wisely pointed out, um, that there was an inconsistency in the chart data earlier in the report in kind of those summary of what residents, um, the sentiment of residents and, um, I think we mentioned this last time, but really high level, um, when you look at the resident population itself, um, there is support for caps in the in the residential basically. When you look at part-time residents alone or, you know, the full survey respondents, um, there's not, it's it's, you know, fairly evenly split, give a little bit more of a cap and so, um, that's very difficult. So it was, you know, I would say it was a great group, it was a task force, it was awesome, people came to the hearing, the meeting, um, the public comments. I thought we had really good input from the community, you know, at the meeting, all, um, and these people were very respectful. I mean, this was an issue that people feel strongly about and I think everyone was open to learning and I think there, I think everybody on the task force has moved, morphed and evolved, um, throughout the process. So we have a lot of work ahead, um, because, uh, the the recommendations are pretty high level, so, um, you know, we can. Ryan, you wanna talk a little bit about sort of how we go forward or do you have?
Yeah, certainly, so I I think, um, you know, from a staff perspective, what we plan on doing, uh, from here, uh, the kind of, it's gotta make those few tweaks that were conditions of the approval, but very minor and and we'll we'll get that that full report, uh, final report will be available to anybody that would like at the at any point to start their, uh, and their reading, but, uh, from a staff perspective, I think we anticipate probably bringing together the, uh, the planning commission chair, uh, Holly is the short-term rental task force chair and the mayor to kind of discuss next steps and how, uh, you know, that should be presented. It should be presented in some sort of, uh, joint meeting between the council and planning commission. Uh, should we, you know, kind of, uh, leave it to the planning commission at this point, uh, to conduct some further work specific to zoning items and then make further recommendations to the council. Uh, so we'll kind of talk through the the different options, but one way or another, uh, you as a planning commission certainly will be taking a look further at the some of the the zoning pieces of things.
No, I agree, if, you know, the report was in the the jet, the packet for the short-term rental meeting. So there is only a minor changes, so I would encourage if you haven't had a chance to kind of read through. You know, the most important pages that I think we're gonna be getting into are gonna be with recommendations part. And so it's halfway forwards and then there's like three pages of recommendations. And so just to kind of get yourself familiar with them before it gets presented formally to us at the October nineteenth meeting. That's the goal, is when they actually give it in for formal presentation, right?
Well, we'll have to have a discussion about whether is that gonna be a formal presentation jointly is is of the two bodies or you specifically, we'll certainly discuss that and.
Right, because one of the things that we also discussed is, and we'll come up in the overall meeting, now some of the things that are in here can be handled by police orders and city council immediately, and so it's a question of do we want to all kind of go through plannings. So those those type of decisions will have to kind of be made. And I think on Joe's point also, it was the, on that page seventy seven, it was, it said the three least, um, was it the three least supported options was all three of them were caps. And so it made it sound like everybody was totally against the caps, but he was pointing out that we gave them like twenty-five, thirty and thirty-five percent. And so when you took them and you divided it up, it made it look like those were the least favorable because you kind of split that vote three way. And so it was really kind of just trying to make difference and clarification there. Um, but no, I I think the task force really did a nice job and we even had some of them and if you weren't on today's, um, call or watching, I don't know if I knew you were there, if you were online. You know, there were some members who were like, can we continue?
Right.
And, you know, I I was kind of like, well, you know, that's that's right if I overstep, I was like,
For.
It's a, it was set up for a purpose, the purpose has been achieved, thank you very much, but we don't need a new unit of government. And it was, I, a couple of people kind of.
It was sort of sweet.
It was sweet, but they just.
But it was like, oh, no, no, no.
I was concerned that one person voted against something and I was like, was it because I said you had to like, get finished? But no, it worked out, so I I really appreciate that part of it. And then as we encourage them to be active as the planning commission is moving on it over the next couple of months, you know, if they wanna kind of stay and see, are we following through with the recommendation? But I'm getting to where we need to have an oversight via a task force and the effort moves into our realm.
Well, considering the, um, kind of response, we should also encourage them, I mean, there's opportunities, don't you want?
Exactly where I was going.
That's exactly what I told Ryan after the meeting.
He's at the meeting.
I said, there's probably gonna be openings in various times, there's opportunities, you got it.
That's what I said to him.
Uh, yeah, Collins, thank you, German man, good evening, everybody. I just wanna thank the, uh, task force for its work, um, having, having been involved in projects like that, it's it's, uh, I'm very grateful. Yeah, to put that people's foot forward, encouraged by people that wanna continue serving and glad you mentioned that. Um, Commissioner Gant, because, uh, we certainly always hope that people could be interested in serving in additional capacities. Um, I've not had a chance to read the report, uh, but I would suggest if we're looking at whether, how to present this, um, this effort along with the waterfront auditorium has really been, I think, a good example of how we can engage the public. Um, years ago and past councils have not been as good, I think, and commissions have been as good in engaging the public at this level. I would see that continuing through the point of actually presenting to the community. And, uh, whether it's another town hall or perhaps something that would just be, we're presenting to the community and the council and the commission, not just the council, the commission, whoever come up with, I think it's important to make that definite since and keep keep on that spread because, um, people are gonna have a lot of interest in this, they may not read through all of that. Looking on here from the task force chairs, we might hear from the commissioner or from the, um, task force members, so I would just encourage to think through that.
Communication's gonna be really difficult to speak about change, um, I mean, because it is, it's near end year to people's heart, so they won't bring it, won't bring it back.
Yeah, I would also encourage, when you mention the word change, uh, this community does not afford change despite what we hear. The community goes through changes unwillingly and sometimes willingly, I think this is an opportunity, a point of saying, okay, here's the change that's being suggested, then here's why. Prepare the community for that. What's happened is that when things are dropped and changed for absolutely no reason, that people can see that, that's when people get upset. So I think it's a great opportunity, change, and I think it's very useful too, all within the corporate environment, too, which you can do through.
I think when you do get a chance to read through the report, virtually everything that was said in the surveys as well as the town halls, that we kind of recommendation that we've heard time and time again are in the recommendation, so, you know, if anyone takes the time to look at, they'll say, gosh, they did listen because they're addressing this, they're addressing this and addressing this, you know, the, um, yes, so it's a matter of how do you kind of communicate it out. And again, we'll be communicated because even if you're a councilor planning, people will be welcome there. And I'm assuming when they start the conversations, just like it was when the task force first started.
I think yesterday was sort of a low day, but I.
Because most of them kind of seen and they they realized that it was gonna be broader and the topics that they have the greatest interest in will be addressed by the, uh, commission and then guessing will start to get more of the participation, probably will have blank screens uh, when you get to the, uh, October, November meetings.
But also some points. As we're considering how we, um, present this to either the planning, council, combination of whatever. Um, we all need to be thinking about the capacity, in terms of the policies that we need to be able to change it. Because if we see that all of these changes, which we all have seen, uh, can happen with the capacity that we have in place today, that's, um, you know, I think. So I think that's another element that the commission and council should take into consideration, because the worst thing to do is let the policy in the room.
Right.
And even sort of ramp out, like, days one, two, three, if I could do that.
And I think as we're discussing it, it all has to kind of, yes, totally fall into place, it's one of my top points is can the staff handle it? Even when looking at like Chief Joe, the, um, fire chief, when he said you can handle annually, if somebody looks at it really closely, it says they could if they're adding a person just to do that. You know, it's so it's like, yes, we can, but are we really budgeted? And do we want to propose such a requirement that would require adding one full-time, you know, person to, you know, the prior, you know, so those are kind of things that we, we have to kind of weigh out. Is it, it's a good idea, but, you know, if the benefit equal to the cost, greater than the cost. So I look forward to it, I think it's, um, you know, and we definitely gathered, you know, one of the things I thought was kind of interesting when we were talking last fall, going into the winter, about forming a task force, many of us kind of had, you know, thoughts as to what some of the bigger items were, you know, positives as well as some of the potential, potential nuisances. And even though we, now, six months later, we found out that they were pretty much in line, but you gave the entire community an opportunity, you know, as to to, um, participate. And now you really do have a good document, I think, you know, a good base to kind of move forward with. But I feel good about it. Anything else, fun?
There's a point two, I don't know.
And and Ryan's, I mean, for me, this is the first time I've done a public, you know, thing like this and, um, you know, the clerks and, um, Brian.
They're extremely, well done, well done. Thank you for your, thank you. Moving on to new business, our first item is item A, the proposed zoning for this amendment regarding restaurants without their seating and expanded outdoor dining areas. Ryan, would you like to give us?
Yeah, yeah, that's your kind of chair and, um, so it's kind of a little bit of history, so, you know, uh, pre-pandemic, uh, your your zoning ordinance had, well, it still does, has, um, uh, requirements or allows for expanded outdoor dining, um, in the right of way. And so, um, really the way your zoning ordinance defines that is, you know, includes streets and and other areas. Now, how, uh, was kind of applied in the past with expanded outdoor dining was that, you know, it was on sidewalks. Uh, COVID nineteen hits and, uh, the pandemic forced all of us to kind of rethink a a lot of things and and that kind of included, uh, maybe where we're dining during a pandemic. And so, uh, as most, nearly every community, you know, did during the pandemic, um, it kind of offered some flexibility on it because there was emergency orders and everything else to allow restaurants to kind of expand their dining outdoors beyond maybe just sidewalks and in this case into the the streets. Um, so what's kind of happened, uh, uh, is that now that the pandemic has kind of ended, we're kind of in the situation where we have this like hodgepodge of approvals. And so you have a zoning ordinance that says if you have outdoor dining in the right of way, you're subject to making sure that you get special land use approval from the planning commission. In the case of some businesses, they actually do have prior, uh, zoning approvals to do just that, but maybe they expanded what their original zoning approval was. Uh, I haven't come back to yet to to get their, you know, uh, special land use and site plans updated. Uh, you have other situations where you have businesses that don't have any of the zoning approvals, uh, to be in the street or on the sidewalk. Um, so, you know, as we kind of, you know, I came on board, we kind of recognized that, you know, the pandemic, uh, it's kind of, um, you know, shifted. It's not an emergency nature anymore, it's more manageable, um, there's not really as much, uh, a case to say that we need an emergency basis to not be following our ordinances. Um, at a point that we kind of evaluated those things, we were getting closer to the spring and and felt that, uh, there could be some concerns with forcing a lot of businesses to be coming for you to get ready for the, uh, the summer season. And so we we brought this issue to the city council, uh, and they granted, uh, approval to essentially exercise some prosecutorial discretion throughout the summer. Uh, there were still requirements to to obtain, um, uh, you know, either a license to operate in the street or revocable license to operate on the the sidewalk, so there were still, you know, some layers of approval that were there. Uh, but the agreement was that, uh, at the end of November, essentially, we were gonna go, return back to everybody has to comply with the, um, the zoning ordinance. So what we kind of have in place right now is you have your current zoning regulations, but then you have kind of a separate police powers ordinance that, uh, covers expanded outdoor dining specific to the streets. And so what's before you this evening essentially is a draft language that would bring, take the police powers ordinance that you have related to the street and all those regulations, combine them into the zoning ordinance, so the standards are essentially the same. They already have to get zoning approval anyway, based on the current zoning ordinance, so it kind of combines everything into the zoning ordinance. Um, so businesses would have to come and get your special land use approval and site plan reviews for, uh, any expanded outdoor dining into the the sidewalks or streets going forward, but they would also still be subject, this is currently a requirement of your current zoning, to obtain a revocable license agreement from the city council as well, uh, because essentially it's, you know, the city kind of controlling that space, so. Um, so what I'm asking you to do tonight is kind of provide some some feedback, uh, on if you think anything should be added, taken out, if you wanna go in a different direction and do something different, um, and if you are comfortable with the language that's here, um, uh, schedule a public hearing next month to, I guess, public feedback on this and then make a recommendation ultimately to the city council on the changes.
Do I understand, do I understand correctly that every single bar or restaurant in our city that currently has outdoor dining into the right of way will be coming before us sometime, if this is approved, sometime before the next season to get a site plan review?
I would say nearly all, um, in the case of the, um, Cala building down the street, they kind of have like three, well, they had, I know Rose moving out, but three different restaurants and so the building owner had some approval for outdoor seating, but they've expanded that that initial approval because of the Mexican restaurant that's in the street, um, so they would have to come back for approval of that, it was the building owner would. Um, Wix had approvals for sidewalk seating, um, but they've expanded into the street, which would trigger a special land use and site plan review as well. Uh, and then there's been several others obviously that have expanded, you know, onto the sidewalks and streets during COVID.
So the answer is yes.
Could be.
Could be a number, I mean, there could be a number, but if we have the standard set, then it should be something where if they come in and they meet all of the standards that are in the ordinance, it should be rather quick, do they meet it or do they not?
It it was just, uh, it was just a question, it's. I'm trying to plan my both the nights out.
Trust me, trust me. Especially when we get into the winter months, we were normally thinking, maybe there might be a month we didn't have something. But, um, hey, I do have a couple of comments on the proposal. Let's see, first, other people first.
Um, and I'm not trying to make fun, it's really just seeking information of, um, the impact of in-street dining on parking and if we've done some looking at that, given that parking is so clear and if if there's any data on kind of, like, what thoughts been given to that?
You know, so this might be a good one for Mr. Gardner to kind of lean on, because he was here during the council discussions on when this policy decision was made to, you know, um, kind of allow the expanded outdoor dining into the streets and what the thought was on it going forward. Um, I mean, I know parking has has been right, I will say, I mean, I've had, I mean, some folks, I've heard a lot of pros, but I've also heard a lot of others complain that the expanded outdoor dining does take up some parking spots, but I've also heard a lot of people talk about how innovative it is and it's it's great to have the expanded outdoor dining and additional seating because during the summer months, so.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Collins, the, um, the council, when we discussed this, of course, was in the, um, this was the pandemic and every, and all the confusion and and everything going on with that concerning business owners being able to, you know, seek people and be able to, you know, continue to operate their business, the parking was discussed. And the the only metrics I recall is that someone went around and physically counted the number of spots that each expanded outdoor dining used and that was using the calculation for the fee, so I think we had a number of like seventy-five spots. The interesting thing to me is that this is kind of wax and wane. It really went heavy on when this first became available and a lot of, a lot of establishments put put something in the street. It's waned since then and there's, you know, a few of them that have just simply decided it wasn't worth the effort. They had to go through a lot of different operational things to be able to make it work and they've just decided it wasn't worth the effort. Plus being able to get staff to serve that expanded dining, that's something that brought from a lot of business owners. So from my perspective, the parking is an issue and should be considered as part of the overall discussion, but I don't think that should be the driving force. Really what's my concern is that what's kind of a balance here, right? Should everybody be allowed to have it or should it be a limited number and that's more of a policy decision for the council to make? But should it be developed with everybody that wants to do it, because it's limited to restaurants that serve food? So bars, exclusively bars are not allowed to do this, it's just restaurants that serve food, I believe, that they're not.
Well, not the way the new one.
No, but just currently, so, um.
Restaurants essentially, the the definition essentially includes bars, I mean, you're, the way it's defined.
Yeah, we went round and round on that definition, if you remember, I don't know if you were here when that was.
Like a sandbar, I think. It was not sandbar, it was, um, sandbar.
Yeah, I don't know if the sandbar ever came, came in, but anyway, to your, to your question, that is a concern and it has to be discussed. It's part of the overall discussion here of, you know, what impact does it have on parking spots? You know, if you talk about seventy-five parking spots, which is a discussion item, I don't know what's the percentage of total number of spots in town that is, but it's probably, you know, probably down five, ten percent, maybe something like that. Um, so on certain weekends, that's a premium.
Mm-hmm.
Premium enough a spot.
What should I have regarding is, um, she might know that I didn't know this, but, um, when the high schools, you want to, I mean, is there always, I don't think so, is there always parking available for high school or does high school fill up and essentially the city is out of parking places?
The high school filled up on Memorial Day weekend.
It's, uh. It's also been a little challenging because the high school's under construction, it's a part of the parking lot that we, we wouldn't have.
Yeah, and, yeah, and.
It's been filling up this summer quite a bit.
Yeah, in past years, it has never completely filled, but to the points that, you know, the man who's making, has filled up on the weekends, um.
So, but that's a temporary situation based on construction?
Yeah, been twenty-five, we need books to be done.
I think most weekends, um, the, um, high school parking, you said, then you did.
Absolutely.
While the parking.
Right.
One of the things I think you can do is send, um, on the parking issue, just so that you make sure that we know where we're covering everything, that a lot of employees, um, take up these parking spots, you know, all day. So those are not, so that weighs on the available parking spots for itself. And so there's a lot of, parking issue is larger than simply whether or not, you know, restaurants have serving food. Um, and, uh, so, it it, parking is a, we, we like to call.
Yeah.
Hold it there.
It would be nice to have a couple of different things, it would be nice though to have, um, some numbers around this. So there is, I think, a different kind of conversation, and what is the total parking capacity that we have?
That study that was done has a good, I remember Keith, why you keep, you put that study, you got it, had a total number, had, and it may be fluctuated now with different restaurants, but that, there is a good study out there that's available.
Good, and that's in the public record, thanks for.
And are we only looking at the parkings available right in the downtown area, like the Long Butler and Water and the side streets? Or when we talk about parking, if we were parking on the hill?
I would think, I mean, I would like to know the entire amount of the space that's available on the street.
So that everything is being considered in downtown?
Yeah, which can fluctuate depending on hardscaping on certain.
Where do you think that much or however?
And the other issue for us, I think, is, you know, um, our competitiveness, I think, a lot of types of tourists, you know, for everything that's happening, there's grand head and bitters, um, and while competing and so, um, and not only in terms of parking, but also in terms of dining, you know, the kind of experience tourists could have when they come here. So that's just the other thing that stays in my head is I'm considering stuff like this.
And also if we're thinking of, we wanted to mention the short-term rental task force that kind of is related to short-term rentals, is, you know, parking on the streets like Main Street where, you know, you can't get emergency vehicles down, people are parked on both sides. If the city decides to. If the city decides to address that, then that's taking. So just I looking at parking, I mean, I know this isn't a parking. Um, it has bearing on.
Right. I, I was just going to finish with as a, as a council member, um, as a resident. I, I think the expanded outdoor dining should continue. Is that what level it should be continued that is, I think, the discussion item for me? And how the zoning ordinance would support that. I, I don't see this going away. I think it's been a real bad.
I think it's. So the idea of having a public hearing, I think, was very consensus. The, uh, question when the, when it talks about the space. You know, it's based on whether it's vertical or horizontal parking, but both of them say it can't exceed forty feet of line. Is there some place in there that says it can't exceed the width of the establishment? It's like, I mean, like, you know, bills can't, can't do forty feet if the establishment's only thirty-five.
I recall that there is, it couldn't go beyond their, um, their, whatever.
Right, their frontage.
Um, if that goes, maybe I'm just missing it. Yeah, thank you. And gave us our, the proposed additions to the, the ordinance. And I assume it goes under, what is it, one, something, section zero. But standards, eh, what you gave us, where does this fit in? Under what provision does this, is this going to be added?
So you, right now in your current ordinance, you have one, five, four, oh, nine, two, oh. So which talks about restaurants with outdoor seating. So would modify that entire section to basically split out if that, if it's outdoor seating on the restaurant premises. It's kind of one section and then it adds the other section related to combining the expanded outdoor dining area.
Number is one through. Okay, it goes zero, one. Oh, so it's not under subsection O, it's under, it's under, uh. Whatever in the let, uh. Special land use section of the zoning ordinance. I'm trying to figure out where this, where this sits in the overall zoning ordinance.
So under, yeah, under special land uses and then it, under design standards for selected special land uses.
Okay, and what number is, what provision is?
It's one, five, four, point zero, nine, two.
Zero?
Zero, nine, two.
Right. Okay, so I have that. And then where does all of this stuff?
Under two, there's a bunch of added two. Standards, all the standards.
Okay, all right. I'm just working off of what I'm looking at. So I didn't see if it's in.
If you look at page fourteen, it's got the section. At the center where it says section one is.
I'm in support of a public hearing.
If there's no more discussion, can you have another discussion or should we move to a motion to approve?
I would, uh, make a motion to, right here, moment, I would. Thank you. I would make a, thank you. I would make a motion to set a public hearing on October ninth, twenty twenty-three. Oh, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, the zoning ordinance amendments for restaurants, outdoor seating and expanded outdoor dining.
Should we include in there that's October nineteenth during the planning commission meeting?
You can, I, I don't think.
And we have a motion in a second. Progression on it.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I'm sorry.
Sure.
So the dates, do people, I mean, it comes like, or, or April, or November, probably use it that long.
Yes, some.
Doesn't make a difference.
Some do. I know like copper crap right away, wanted to set up April first and I think they are scheduled through the end of October.
Given how has it been, you know, some of the things that ran here, you know, about nuisanceers and not blocking right away. Has there been any complaints or any issues regarding water or? Right away or?
Um, not, not so much.
Blocking. I know there's been some concerns with some about like when they're parking, not being able to, like, if, if there hasn't been adequate space for like passenger egress. Um, so that's come up a little bit, um. This summer I haven't received any complaints on any of them, so.
The only thing I've heard from, uh, several people, including the police, is that there are certain intersections where it's a possibility around. They have outdoor dining and literally haven't just know about intersection. So I think that needs to be addressed as part of this discussion too, is I would also ask the DPW to give their feedback on their experience with the expanded outdoor dining. Because everything that's done in any kind of public right of way, DPW is in some form.
Yeah, no, you go right about that. Like, for example, like the, the. No, no, you're right. Yeah, I mean, like we did, um, you know, line painting, um, and so the Yoda areas. Yeah, yeah, um. And certainly, I mean, even the regulations are here. I mean, if, if there's concerns with like, you know, clear vision on, on traffic corners and you feel like, you know, they need to pull the, you know. Outdoor dining area back a space or something like that, that's something to consider, although I know there's been arguments that, well, if you pull it back a space, a car could just park there and. And prevent, and have the same issue. And I, I think those are things you all have to wrestle with with some of these site plans. But I think that's exactly why it would be good for you to review these and make sure that you're comfortable that they are, you know, they're safe, they're, they're good aesthetically, that. Not an overburden on public resources.
It's funny on the, on the street painting, it's, um, the ordinance, as I recall, was, was written in such a way that if expanded outdoor dining goes up and the line painting is being done. They are, they are, they can be asked to literally remove their expanded outdoor dining to allow the city to park. Now, they weren't asked to do that, but that's something that I think you should be considering those two, because this creates actual DPW and for our contract, if it doesn't work. Yeah, but exactly, that's, it's a pause.
And I'm not thinking that, I mean, I thought about this, it's a driving. And, um, uh, came down the street and we, the, we did the lifts and lots of people, lots of people that are in the side. Uh, the street and. Yard and people sort of everywhere in the street, falling out into the street, and I mean, like, oh my gosh, this is the. It just, it just stuck, maybe it was just a moment in time where it was, it's busy, I don't know, but it was, um, yeah.
What I think occurs, and as I mentioned, sometimes people, when there are the sidewalk, even though you have to have that five-foot plan. People think that if they're walking through the restaurant, so then they think they could walk out into the street to kind of get around it, even though that five feet is. You know, that's a consideration, but should be sidewalk, you are such a, they know that it is a pass. Just being part of.
And not to call out Wicks specifically, but that artificial grass that's on the sidewalk is not allowed. So.
Yeah, so that was a conversation that, yeah, that we had, you know, I had with her in the spring that, um, you know, once we kind of get to the. Agreement was that things were kind of, continue status quo for the summer, but once it came time for zoning, at least the, the regulations that are before you would require that piece be on like a solid surface. So putting, you know, them on your grass would be an issue. So that, that, there may need to be some improvements there if they were to continue that.
I, I can't think of a restaurant with outdoor dining. Walk through those and you, you know, I mean, you can get through, but, you know, I, I think it's going to.
Well, absolutely. No one's. I'm talking about all of them. You have to see many times that kind of that.
Well, even I experienced something like Thursday at Barrows, so they all go. Um, uh, and it is, it's just the time and lots of people everywhere and. People haven't had the time and not necessarily paying attention to where they're standing as they're further into the street. So.
Right, moving on to item B, which is the approval of the report of recommendations to the planning commission and city council. Yeah, the search.
Run agenda, run agenda. Item D, the waterfront development zoning ordinance review. I'm like, where's my, I'm like, where's my zoning ordinance there? Putting that one away.
So as part of this one, Brian, you want to kick it off and then we'll ask David if you can join in.
Yeah, Mr. J, I think I'll, I'll just turn it right over to Mr. Jurassic and go, go from there.
Okay, good. Uh, good evening. Uh, Dave, Ryan, would you be able to allow me to share my screen?
Yeah, Sarah can make you a co-host. I'm sure to. You know, it's quick. All right, you're, you're on, Dave.
Okay. God, give me one moment here, um. Okay, good evening. Uh, so another update on the waterfront regulations, uh, project. My thoughts are for this evening would be a, a couple of objectives. Uh, first to, to review the zoning ordinance recommendations. Uh, that I provided in, in the memo from Friday. And then second, uh, just to, to receive, uh, final direction from you, uh, concerning, uh, preparation of the zoning language. So I, I think if we have a general consensus tonight, uh, I can move forward and, and put a pen to paper and begin to, to, uh. Uh, prepare the zoning language for review at your next meeting. Uh, so first off, I wanted to, to follow up on, on the conversation that we left off with last month about the zoning district regulation. And I think one of the last recommendations was concerning, uh, C two Water Street East. And the more I looked at that, I, I, I thought that that was probably a, a really good idea, um, because there's comparable land use regulation between. Uh, Water Street North and Water Street East, and, and really one of the main differences is the ten-foot side setback on the east side of Water Street. Uh, Water Street East zoning district. So, uh, my thought is maybe the most simple way to do this would be to, to rezone Water Street North. On the east side of Water Street to Water Street East. And so that's a seven parcels, um, east of Water Street. Um, there would be no land used on conformities that would result. So, and I think actually one of the, the uses, the, uh, the office building on the north, north end would actually. Uh, become conforming. Uh, I don't think it's actually allowed in the current zoning district. Um, I don't see any issues with setbacks, um, that, that side, that side ten-foot setback, um, on the east side of Water Street. If this, um, area was absorbed into Water Street East. And then with that, um, my, my thought is that we could develop a waterfront preservation district. For everything on the west side of Water Street. So that's all C one, Water Street North, all C two, Water Street South. Uh, from Coglin Park to Lucy Street. And I, and I could get into that a little bit, uh, next slide or two. So, uh, any questions first on the, on this use of the zoning districts and if, if you feel that that would be a simple way to handle this?
David, speaking on behalf of myself, I think the idea of moving. The Water Street East part of the north section, making it just part of overall Water Street East is an excellent idea. I didn't, like, I didn't see the distinction before when, when we raised it. And personally, I like the idea of combining both the north and south and creating a new district and just having it the waterfront preservation.
I don't see. Any issue with it necessarily, but, um. What would be, what would be the objections to it on property?
I can't see. I think the only thing that, the one thing that David will probably go, David, I'm assuming you're going to go into. The fact that we would have one zone, the waterfront preservation, but we would still have to distinguish between. North and south within that zone, because that's the only I could see people would have an issue with. Is that if they fall within a zone and one side gets a hundred percent lot coverage and another section gets forty-five percent lot coverage. But that would be the only thing I could possibly see. And if we keep that distinction.
I, I like that for the water side because I think that we can, our goal of trying to get that walkway all the way, it's all one zone, it's the right thing. I don't believe there's anything that affects those seven properties, but that would be something to review by the next meeting and have, and get the public feedback on this.
And you kind of think about the word change here. So this word presented change is an opportunity to explain to the property owners, using for this thought. And if we just in the district, right, that's one of our overall reaching goals. Two, is I also wanted to ask David, did we not discuss including C four resort in the. Is that part of the, is that part of the recommendation?
No.
We had, didn't we talk about that at the last meeting of. Making C four resort part of the waterfront now we, that's suggested down to the waterfront preservation district? Am I, am I not recalling that correctly?
I think at one point we were discussing it. David, you can kind of let us know. There were too many differences in what was allowed. And the setbacks and the coverage on the C four. It was easier to make the east side. The Water Street North and Water Street South, one district, and then just having the resort. Primarily because they would be actually not conforming. But David, is that correct?
Um, so the, is the, the question concerning C four?
Yeah.
Or I'm sorry, R, R four?
It would be. No, it's C four, the resort, you know, having that remain separate was primarily due to it has so many different. Requirements as far as setbacks and lot coverage. It's not as consistent as being able to combine the two on the east side. Is that correct?
Uh, that, that's correct. Yeah, I think there's a different objectives. Like, I think, I mean, we have s- same overarching objectives. For the entire project, but I think we have some very distinct ones for the water fronts, uh, for Water Street North and Water Street South. So. In, in so much that I think those should be combined with, with their own priorities and then. Uh, the other one can, can really just say it as it, as it is, the same title, same designation, uh, but we would make some, some tweaks to the requirements for that district as well.
And I know Commissioner Brooker's not here, but there was a comment, I believe she made last week about the same concern that the. People on the west or east side of the river have about waterfront views of the, on the west side as well. Um, but there's a lot of areas between that, in that district that are, you know, potentially developable. Or, you know, could be changing and could very well wall that off if not thought about, so.
I think the one thing that was being proposed, yeah, and they'll have it in here, is to require a maximum building width of sixty percent. And the C fours that we currently don't have. I know we're jumping ahead, David, I'm sorry.
If it was consolidating.
Yeah, north and south.
We're combining north and south. Okay, earlier we were talking about Water Street.
Well, what we're talking about is first, Water Street North, we're taking the east side of the street. And putting that into Water Street East. So that'd be the seven parcels that sit on the north end of.
Yeah, so that apart, okay, I understand that.
But then once that's taken out of Water Street North, then what's left would just be the waterfront and then combining all the waterfront.
Okay, so combining into one zone, which is the same thing as calling it a water, a downtown waterfront preservation district. Okay, I would, okay, that's my, that was my question. It seemed like we were creating. A larger zone and at the same time a separate empty control. And we're not, correct? So if I were a property owner in this thing, in this, in this area. I could look at one dock, one thing, and it will be a zoning ordinance and it will either be called. Water Street something, or it will be called.
Correct. With the understanding though that the preservation district would have a delineation between, are you north of a certain street or south of a certain street?
But it's all going to be in the same zoning.
Correct.
Same district.
Uh, okay, and, and I, I noticed the north and south part, um. How will, how will it fit in, in our zoning ordinance? Be, and how will it show up on our zoning map? The, and how will it show up on our zoning map?
Well, you're you you already have a Water Street East district, so that would remain, um, your Water Street North and Water Street South zoning districts and your zoning ordinance would essentially go away and be combined.
Which in yellow, that would be the zone. I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're under your zoning districts and your zoning where it's Water Street North, Water Street South would go away, you'd have a new preservation district that would combine those two. So the area of, this is an area of study map.
No, I understand, I'm sorry, uh, um, what it says from up here to Coglin Park.
Yep. Correct, so all along Water Street there, from Willow Park to Coughlin Park, that would be one large zone, and that's the way it would be delineated on the zoning map as well.
And then, but as to what you can do in that zone, it first you will look at under provision for downtown waterfront preservation district.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, well, good question.
It wasn't Hillon Nation Street again?
Did you just mean Francis?
And I like that you said Willow Park instead of Lucy's, just because I think that's important, there's a lot of documentation says Lucy where I think Willow's just beyond that.
It is.
Well, I guess I I should be careful then, because technically, I mean, if I'm looking at, so the map that's up there, if you actually look at that that corner there where Willow Park's at, it looks like it's actually in the the CR district, so I think David's correct, that Lucy Street fully are cut off. That light blue was the end of your Water Street North district.
Does it have to be?
No. No, I mean, you're right, I mean, Willow Park raises right on.
We're about, we're about to draw.
Straight on the water.
About to draw a new line.
Yeah, why, yeah, why wouldn't you just extend that?
And if we want to create a boardwalk, that's part to part.
Right, you want.
Well, I mean, something to think about would be, okay, well, it's a park space today, maybe it's not in the future and somebody buys it, then it would be eligible to have whatever uses are allowed in that particular portion of that zoning district and you're pushing it closer to the residential areas, so.
Okay.
Effectively not mosquito park.
That was, I'm sorry.
Mosquito Park was our name for it. And that's where the sewer, literally that's where the sewer pipe used to drop right in the river.
So it's currently, Willow Park is currently zoned residential.
Yeah, it's, it looks like it's part of the the CR districts.
All right, David, do you want to continue?
Sure, sure, and I think, uh, some of the the following slides will be, um, some of these are recap from our our previous conversation, then some I've refined some of the recommendations. Uh, so I'll I'll go through these fairly quickly, um, and we could stop, uh, whenever we have questions or or address those at the end. Um, so first off, the special land use review, um, we discussed last time, just expanding the, uh, the number of special land uses, uh, in this, in the, this area, uh, in Water Street, uh, our our new water preservation district, uh, so instead of by right permitted uses, uh, we could classify a number of them as special uses, uh, just to give us a additional discretionary review authority uh, during the site plan review, special land use process. Then number two, uh, this is again what we just discussed, C two Water Street East absorbs C one Water Street North, north of Francis. And then again, summary here, uh, uh, create a downtown waterfront preservation district, and so, uh, just just like we just said, uh, designate waterfront property, um, from Coglin Park north to Lucy, um, and possibly, um, Willow Park, uh, based on your discussion. And then we'd have a specific purpose statements for the the waterfront preservation district to to really reinforce the the purpose and intent of this new district and and why we're, you know, creating these new regulations and in in restrictions in a way. Revise the the allowable land uses, uh, we we talked about land use regulation a bit last meeting or two, uh, the ground for regulation, uh, ground for residential, um, didn't see that as that big of a deal if it wasn't facing the right of way, so that might be one idea. Uh, prohibiting single family and two family residential, uh, just didn't seem appropriate for the the waterfront area in this location. Uh, increase the minimum lot size to a quarter acre. And then, uh, as as we mentioned before, uh, create a distinction between the requirements for north and south of Francis Street. And I think just, uh, there's comment before about how it will be easy for someone to 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 know where the district they're in and what requirements apply. And I think what we can do is when we create the tables showing the dimensional requirements, we just add in um, two columns, one for north, one for south, and and the requirements would be side by side, so someone wouldn't have to page the ordinance to to find the requirement, but they would look in one's, one place and and then check their column, uh, for their respective, uh, north or south of Francis. So north, uh, we were going to maintain the maximum lot coverage of a hundred percent, and that was because we were going to include, uh, side setbacks now, and then even um, increasing the 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 front setback, um, so that would really kind of, uh, create uh, a situation where we would not be a hundred percent lot coverage, so the the setbacks would would serve that purpose in a way. Uh, the front setback, um, we are going to increase it to five feet with a maximum of twenty feet, and so similar to the recommendation for south of Francis, uh, this will be what we call a build two area, so we're actually, you know, drawing the the front building line of the structure uh, to that that area between five and twenty feet from the right of way. Um, so that would, that would generally draw buildings closer to the street, uh, but a- as we said, this is not your traditional Main Street district, uh, this is, uh, something different. You know, we don't want to bring buildings all the way up to the right of way and and have a a full street wall of building facades, we we want to push them back just a bit and allow some separation between them, so, um, that's really the intent of, uh, north of Francis. Uh, south of Francis, then, we were going to really maintain that existing lot coverage maximum of forty-five percent. And we were going to, um, uh, similarly have a front setback of, uh, twenty feet minimum and a maximum of forty feet. So the same concept, except as a build two area. And then, uh, increasing side setbacks, and actually, I didn't mention this before, but, uh, we could either do like a five, a ten foot setback um, on each side for north, and then on south, a twenty foot setback on each side, um, or you could do a a total amount of setback, so if they, if they did two times that on one side, um, so in the first example, if if we had ten foot side setbacks, um, they could satisfy the requirement by having twenty feet on one side and zero on the other, so it would just give a little bit of flexibility for for design, uh, to allow that option as well. Uh, with with the same intent as in, um, creating that that visual aspect, um, allowing that setback for access.
Yeah. David, let's pause here and see if we have some questions.
Sure.
All right, now I've got two, um, under north of Francis, if if you is it not contradictory to say that somebody can build a hundred percent on their lot, and yet they have to have front yard and side yard setbacks? Isn't that necessarily contradictory and and? I I see a lawsuit.
Well, I think what we could, actually, maybe what we do is just say that there's no requirement, um, rather than say a hundred percent, it it's a hundred percent right now, um, and and we do do have a twenty-five foot rear setback, so it it'd be the, it really, what could happen right now. Um, but we could either do a hundred percent, or we could just, you know, put a line there that says, uh, you know, not applicable for north of Francis.
What's not applicable?
Uh, a lot coverage maximum.
Because that was my question, David, couldn't we just have the front setback and then the side setbacks, and then they could build on the rest of the lot without saying what your coverage is?
Yeah, I I think that's just fine, and so i- in the dimensional table, we would just put a a not applicable or a mark, um, for maximum lot coverage.
That would probably create the only zone in our entire city that doesn't have a
Well, but it's not for a hundred percent, so you're already restricting it more than what it currently. Because it currently allows you to have a hundred percent coverage, so by at least setting it up to where you now have to have setbacks if you are moving forward, then it's less than a hundred percent coverage moving forward, without without us actually going out and saying, well, it's not something.
Okay, I've just been about your phone, I'm sorry, my other question is, or or comment. Uh, the one of the purposes for side yard setbacks is for air, fire safety, visual, we talked last meeting about having ten foot setbacks so that people can see straight through the water. So when you say that somebody could either do ten on each side or zero on one side and one on the other, that seems to go against all three of those principles for traditionally why setbacks happen with in with respect to any structure. Again, so the fire coming to get through so that there is light and air and like a fact like a hundred and some years, so. I I'm not crazy with the idea of, oh, I can do zero and twenty or ten and ten, I think it shouldn't, my thought is initially ten and ten.
Yeah, I I I, um, I share the concern about the hundred percent coverage, I think it would be appropriate to strike that, uh, to that question about the I actually appreciated the option three of having some flexibility, because these districts have been not purposely uniform, right? This is just, you know, it's just, it looks the way that it does, and I think to continue to encourage that, uniformity is not, is not my interest, I think it should be, and I I appreciate that flexibility, but Commissioner O'Shea brings up a good point that exactly consideration about safety, um, and other issues that might be impacted by that.
So, yeah, I mean, so some, if if there's some sort of, uh, like, fire code requirement that a building, you know, couldn't be, you know, right up against the the property line because of some issue with the building next storm, and, you know, there is a fire code too, that they would have to comply with and get signed up from the fire department on, so. I see what you're saying, I I think Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, you're you're just, we're offered some flexibility, and some people would probably prefer to see that twenty foot wide area from, you know, this visual perspective, but I see you hear what you're saying as far as, well, is there going to be fire access issues if we allow somebody to go right up against the lot line, and then there's, you know, another property right up next to that, and we, you know.
And we're also only talking about west side of Water Street, so the fire department is going to be directly around on the front door. They would, if they, it'll be right out in front of the building, it's only one building deep, it only goes from Water Street to the water. It's not like there's.
And they have a car boat, so if the fire is on the on the water side, David, don't worry about buying down a building that has no setback on itself.
I think the properties are pretty challenging, so give in some flexibility there, I think there's.
A lot. So David.
My heart and all the shoes and things, but we also have the beauty issue. What you can be talking about, one of the beauty requirements, requirements. What is the people's experience? So, sort of, I think, like, you asked earlier, Bobby, what could go, why would somebody ar- argue, I mean, if apart from safety, like, how could, could somebody gain this to do something that we don't want them?
Well, the thing I could see would be, if you had two parcels, and you built one property all the way to your north, your north property, and then you develop a second property all the way to the south end of the next one, then you could have two buildings touching, now a couple, two parcels, without having any separation between, but then they would have to have twenty feet on the end of each of those properties. So those lots up there are fairly small, so it wouldn't be a huge amount of space where you've got, I mean, it wouldn't be any more, any longer than what Mermaid's, your warehouse is right now. Before you'd have a twenty foot open, because you'd have to have twenty feet then, at the northern end and southern end of those two properties that could occur. That's. Yeah.
And I agree, and it's a, and it's a great question, because the property that's at the, just between the bow launch and, I'll take it to be the, um, I forget the name of the Bay Lake Outfitters. The B and B next door, I've heard that there's been attempts to purchase all those properties together with probably the intent to combine them together, which could be impacted by what we're discussing tonight, so if it's one owner and they have to come to the city to say, I want to have the the one lot for this space, I don't even know what the process of that is. It's not a subdivision that's combined the lots. This becomes a discussion item, because that's being attempted, I I mean, I've heard from people that's being attempted, and it could be impacting other properties, even up and down the waterfront. So that's kind of, it's a great question, because that's where I start to go with it, is, okay.
And then it becomes an issue, because then you don't have ten feet, essentially, in each end, what could be four lots currently.
But, you know, Commissioner Anderson's question, we'd have to be thoughtful, developers are very creative.
Oh, they are, and they, they have to be dedicated just for this.
So, and that's not our job to be creative on that front, but it's a great question to ask.
I said, I can, Holly and I are particularly sensitive right now, and another reason for what developers should pay for connection.
Well, Dave, I mean, Dave, do you want to expand upon, you know, pros and cons in those from your expertise too?
Uh, sure, sure, and, uh, so that's the the pros and cons of the, uh, the total setback on one side. And then, um, the the other concern about combining a number of Water Street uh, north parcels, it, so that there would just be a long building with only just ten foot side setbacks on each side, um, that made me concerned a bit about what could result as well, um, so I almost wonder if we could also do a a maximum building width for parcels over a certain, over a certain width, so we have that, um, we are recommending that um, as well, um, just trying to find out in this slide here, but we may want to have a maximum building width, um.
Like you do in C four, just go down a little bit. Where you have a sixty percent maximum building width.
Yeah, yep. So maybe we could look at that for situations where where people are going to be combining lots to create, you know, very lot, uh, long, uh, linear lots, um, with with, uh, you know, increased frontage than what we currently have for each parcel, so something I'll look into that as well.
I I think that's important, because, um, I don't even know the process of you combine parcels, exactly what the process is to do that. And I would certainly, um, think that anybody that's looking at buying adjacent properties, they are not looking to just continue that, they want to take it all down and build. That's what I. I'll give you combined parcels.
You submit an application to, yeah, combine some, combine it, um, so typically the greater concern is when you're going the other direction and dividing it, but, um, so, yeah, combining is not much of an issue, but, um, keep in mind too that, you know, you do also have, uh, historic district commission and structures can't just be demolished without their approval, especially if they're contributing structures, they're going to have a lot to say about that too, so. That that's one after chapter here, but I understand from your perspective, if you have zoning head on, you do have to think of these things.
David, is there any reason why on the south of Francis, we would have a minimum lot, maximum lot coverage at forty-five percent? That seems, that seems very low to me, I think seventy-five percent would be more in line with what we, as long as we have this type of coverage, so if we have side setbacks of twenty feet, which would be a forty feet, you know, allowing them to build so only on forty-five percent, it seems extremely low to me. And I don't know what the rest of the council or the rest of commissioners feel, but I was thinking that we could have, you know, like seventy-five percent like we do in some other areas of the city would be more reasonable.
Especially with increasing the side center.
Correct.
So why did you make that recommendation, David?
Well, the, in this case, the the recommendation was to to maintain the current lot coverage maximum, so right now it is forty-five percent for that area. And one of the thoughts behind just maintaining it is that, uh, later in the, um, the P U D option, uh, that would be a specific item that we could waive or modify, uh, in, uh, in return for, uh, a development that would meet the, you know, the the desires of township, the be in line with the master, the master plan for the community, um, provide for some public space or views, so um, I I don't want, I didn't want to increase it at at all, because I wanted to allow that to be a a waiver incentive for for good development.
Those things.
In in whatever, we we can continue to assess that, I think for now, um, we can put a number there just as a placeholder and and we can highlight it once the the zoning text is together.
Because what I didn't, you know, when I was looking at this and I saw that forty-five percent, they got the setbacks, and the very next requirement you have there is, which is E, it talks about having open air and civic area space for tenant, customers and clients at the discretion of the owner, used by the general public at least ten percent, and I'm like, well, if you've got forty-five percent lot coverage, then why would you only have a ten percent, I mean, where's the, where's the other forty-five percent of the space? Because we're saying at least ten percent, so I was like, well, if we're saying at least ten percent, I mean, I know it could be more, but if I've got a forty-five percent lot coverage and I've got some setbacks. but if I've got a forty-five percent lot coverage and I've got some setbacks, then it seems like I'd have a lot more than ten percent of the property would be available for customers, clients, tenants, see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, it could end up that way, but um I I yeah, I think it's something definitely to look at.
Maybe we just take out that where it says at least ten percent.
Well, would that be relative to the fact that where the Francis, we intend that to be marked up into the building?
But I guess if you only have a forty-five percent lot coverage, I mean, speaking of a seven year lot.
No, I think.
So I agree E is as protecting the boardwalk, this is, but we don't actually call that out and say that, and it's a, if we can just say that, I think that would be clear.
I appreciate the intent of this. Full support of the intent of this.
Yes.
I understand the the current dichotomy between the maximum lot coverage of forty-five percent, within the new attempt, right? Still trying to get my head around it, but I agree with the intent.
Well, I mean, so I'm going on one example, because it seemed like that was a project that kind of triggered some concern for some folks, I mean, if you look at the patio across the street, um it was subject to forty-five percent lot coverage, and imagine if your lot coverage was higher, you know, now granted, some of the the space and and where where it sits, but imagine if you had a higher lot coverage, perhaps you have something, you know, larger. I mean, that, I mean, that's what you're you're talking about, right?
Right. It's about the patio. It could have been larger, except for forty-five percent. Let's, yeah, it was, but we are thinking about the waterfront, if we allow pretty close to a hundred percent of lot end of it, and then the other end you're saying, like, if you can, if you can build a forty-five percent, it's that's going to leave a lot of open space, but you need that. There's nothing, nothing, hey, more the better.
But if it's there already, are we taking?
No, you're not taking any of it, but.
Increasing the setbacks.
I'm guessing the setbacks won't affect forty-five percent. Because those lots are larger, and so you're only talking about forty feet, what's left is you could, it's probably still eighty percent of those lots. Okay.
I know.
At this point, at this point, I'm going to leave it at the forty-five, like currently. Wait, I'm here.
Obviously there's.
I I actually think this is the discussion that the council and you can have in terms of um how much waterfront you're, how valuable it is, uh do we want to? So, and that would make it easier than you say forty-five percent, forty-five percent, eighty percent. Uh if we had a policy that um or some kind of understanding that, you know, uh one of our um competitive advantages of the street is this waterfront view, this boardwalk, and um how open, how important is it that it's open, that it's always open in terms of views?
It's a structural community point, it's highlighted, structural community point.
That's one of the reasons why we're talking about this, because another lesson from short-term rentals, we've told them um really uh timely, as we begin to think of the tracking, the, the, what we, is that um, you know, how it was helpful and wasn't. Uh in terms of short-term rentals, but it's. That's another thing.
Yeah, I think of the public survey as well as the um times we spend on public that get upon and talk to us, it was very clear that that issue is important to people, visitors, residents who like the view and the access to water fronts is non-negotiable. If that's what that's going to put in.
David, on the item G three, where it talks about overhead doors facing public right of ways, now that would apply to the entire district, but we do have a couple of properties that have garage doors facing Water Street. So would they just be uh non-compliant? If we were to include that?
Yes, that that's correct, they would just be a, uh that component of the of the structure would be not conforming.
Okay, this is on, so I mean, G, so G starts in five, six, twenty-one, and then when you flip over, it's G three, it is saying that overhead doors facing the public right of way and front loaded garages could be prohibited. That would be throughout the entire zone, which.
I was just pointing out that we do have some garages that are front facing currently, um and is that something that we want to prohibit? You know, going forward.
Well, if if you're thinking that there are establishments that are placed, or is there?
Well, that's my, well, that's why I'm asking why we prohibit it, because I'm thinking of whether it could be like a retro boats, or if say like if somebody was redoing the the warehouse where the mermaids are, and it's very trendy nowadays to have garage doors that you can raise, and it makes you have an open air type of an establishment. And we may be saying, but you can't have any garage doors facing the street. You know, so there's a difference between a garage door that's being used as a garage, maybe from a safety standpoint, versus a garage door being raised as opposed, it's like a movable wall. You know, we wouldn't prohibit a movable movable wall, but if it goes up, we're prohibited. Because if I had a wall that you opened and it closes and opens the space up, that would be allowed. But if I have a glass door that goes up because it's on a garage door system, this would say it's prohibited.
What do you say, front loaded garage?
I I don't know, what what Dave exactly, Dave, what do you exactly mean by front loaded garage?
I'd be uh front loaded garages for for passenger vehicles.
Oh, okay, well, that makes a difference.
If the only property I can think of that's that. Not a car. Which I think is fine.
Which I think, so again, I wanted to your point, I missed something with the parking, so.
No, I I mean, I'm the zoning administrator, so my very, my thought when I read this was, okay, when it was raised with exactly that, well, it's under parking and garages, and so it seems to be related to those types of.
Then you could have, qualities could have, the garage door that goes up, to open that space, and it wouldn't be considered, it's not parking or garage, it's actually just a movable wall.
I can understand making sure that we're clear, writing it away to where it's it's understandable. So essentially, in your 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 districts along the waterfront and city center, uh there's not a a minimum parking requirement, so that applies to them.
Then, moving on to all districts, David, you've got just the four items?
Yes, so for for all districts then, uh as we discussed in the past, we're going to modernize, simplify and define all the land uses in the affected districts, uh just to make sure there's very clear interpretations uh of what uh each uh land use entails. The current height maximum of twenty-eight feet, uh i- we would maintain that, um and then also regulate the half story, because um a a half story on on a third floor uh can be, if with um large wide dormers can really end up being a a a third floor, um i- if you're, if not, uh if we don't, if we don't regulate that, so I think we can define half story and and state exactly how much square footage can be on that third level, just to make sure it is an actual, you know, you know, attic type level, uh.
Half story versus a full.
Right.
Yeah, living space under under a um uh under a angled roof.
Okay, properties in town outside of districts that have, I think, first limit on that, half story. So I I completely agree with better defining it that exactly.
And then your number six is the voluntary plan unit development. I like this idea, so you want to walk us through it again?
Sure, so uh we we would update the planned unit development provisions, uh just for a a a specific waterfront uh development P U D. Um and then with that, we would have similar intent statements to the the waterfront preservation district, um and then we would prioritize the um the waivers for public waterfront access, um other recognizable waterfront benefits to the community, so uh boardwalks, uh views, access. Um if if those were provided, you know, we would consider waivers for the um the rear set waterfront setback, uh the minimum side setbacks in the uh building uh with maximum, um as well as I should add here as a D, uh the the lot coverage requirements as well.
Would we ever want to waive height if they were able to give enough?
No.
I I I think that's uh interesting, a good point, and I think the survey uh was pretty clearly that it was should be two and a half stories or less, so.
Wanted to make certain it's out there, nothing, it was least discussed.
First and all.
It was discussed.
I, so, I will say by the fact that we have um a depth of knowledge on this. So I need to study it a bit more, but um it's waterfront, and what are we giving up in terms of people? When we go to.
When you have more control with a P U D than if it was just straight zoning?
Yes, I mean, with the with the P U D option, we certainly have uh more control, um in 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 more certainty of what would happen on that site. I think the, is it an issue of whether we make a a voluntary versus mandatory P U D as we discussed last time, or?
She was, David, can you explain the difference between mandatory and voluntary P U D?
Sure, um, I think, uh last meeting of the meeting before, uh I think Chris Patterson first had had mentioned that one of the P U D options could be to just designate the entire waterfront area as a planned development um zoning district, so that we would require a preliminary and final site plan uh for every individual property. And in, we 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 like that idea, but we we thought maybe that's a a little bit too much of a uh an overreach in a way to require that, especially for a a a smaller lot owner, just or just like a someone who who had family land who just wants to redevelop it, um that that might be a bit strict on on the smaller landowner, um but that we would allow for this this voluntary uh P U D uh in order to to grant uh waivers for uh incentives. So, um I think, I think, I mean, unless the planning commission thinks differently, I think this could, should be to an option that someone could take in order to to build a little bit more or build a little bit closer to the the lot line or or um extra uh lot coverage uh in return for um a waterfront benefit, like public space or visibility.
Sorry, uh so the question on on the P U D, and I should know as a commissioner, but a single parcel, can that be a P U D or does that have to be multiple parcels, is there a minimum size of parcel that a P U D can have? I'm I'm thinking about my city lot, maybe a P U D. It's more of a general question, that's just my.
And David, I think what you're saying is that if somebody comes before us, if it's voluntary, if they meet the site, if they have a site plan and it meets the setbacks and it meets all the lot coverage numbers, they would not be required to come before us, because it's not a mandatory P U D, but if they had something that they wanted a, say, a variance for, they could voluntarily submit it as a P U D to the commission. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, so um it would be more of a collaborative planning process at that point, so that they would be able to uh in a way earn uh some extra uh square footage on the site or uh, you know, allow some other flex zoning flexibility uh in return for for really meeting the the city's waterfront goals.
I think, I heard this is our carrot, this is our Water Street North, where it's going to be difficult to get our walkway. You're going to want to build us close to the edge, so with the twenty foot setback or whatever we have, we'll let them approach, but they got to give us their walkways for the public path. That's that's our carrot, to push that forward over fifty years.
Yeah, and also I think this is where you can reward those creative developers. Would have to come to us, to take a look at and work with them, I think, I I I appreciate the flexibility of this, and I would say voluntary versus.
Yeah, if I, Mr. Gardner, to answer your question, um on our P U D standards, um they for minimum area density, at the minimum land area necessary to be considered for a P U D should not be less than the land areas specified for a lot in the underlying zoning district, so as long as the lot can be compliant with the underlying zoning district, then it's it's a pretty cumbersome process though, so like, you know, and then it talks about how you can't basically have density of the dwelling units, can't exceed the permitted amount within the underlying zoning district, so you couldn't do it just for purposes of, you know, kind of density, so. But allow some flexibility for density shifts throughout the site and things like that, um.
So what I'm hearing is that it probably would not be used for a single lot, however, the flexibility of it being there for use is, I think, from acceptance standpoint, important?
I would, well, I I'm, with your example that you were giving about maybe a residential lot, a smaller residential lot, I I would agree that that's probably not likely, but I uh I I think when you look at your zoning, your current zoning map, you have actually quite a few P U Ds uh overlays, and a lot of them are on waterfront. So a lot of the condominium projects, um project that occurred next to um Miss Stanton's business, uh that was a P U D project as well, actually.
I'm supportive of having this.
I like it as a voluntary. It's a fair one.
You know, I would say, I guess I need to learn more, I I'm doing grasses with P U D and things like that. It it feels like it's easier for people to search. And so I just, I I I I mean, you know, I think there, I mean, I'm not saying this about all developers, but who make promises and get what they want. And I know, I I so I would be, I think we need to be really careful that we don't, we have to stick before we get the carrot, because but once the carrot's gone.
Well, it's still be required, they'd have to show you what they're doing, you know, if they started building.
Well, it'd still be required, they'd have to show you what they're building, you know, they started building something that's outside of what was allowed.
But that happens with our private. You know, I think some of the dune grass.
Well, that's, yeah, that would be because we were monitoring the way it was supposed to.
So that's why.
And that's, I, I appreciate that, but that's, the stick is, we're going, we make them be twenty five feet, we, they have to be back in the water. Carrot is if they do it smartly and do it through us and, and give us that public walkway, we'll let them get it. That's why I think you do have the stick before the carrot.
Yeah, that's why I'm going to say it has to be like that.
So what would be wrong with saying you ask for a variance and handle it that way so we have.
But then as a planning commission, you don't have the opportunity to see if it fits in the way of our plan because of the going to zoning. C V A versus planning commission.
Just for the variance.
Well, just for the variance, but that's. If we're, if we're talking about trying to, you know, with the planning commission, you want to plan and have this access to the waterfront. I would rather not have it go to another committee who ran a variance that kind of doesn't, it's not in alignment with what we have established. As our goal for. The waterfront district, that's just my fault.
And, and yes, through a variance process, there really wouldn't be a requirement for a public benefit, it would just be, uh, giving relief. Based on a, uh, unique circumstance concerning the lot or the land, so, uh, the P U D ensures that there's a public benefit. Uh, where the variance process is ensuring somebody has, uh, a reasonable ability to, to develop their land.
So David, your plan, right? So David, your plan is that you'll announce draft. These changes into a, a final ordinance that we would then review and then have a public hearing in November on?
Uh, yes, I think that's, I think that's an ideal timeframe, um, in, uh, Ryan and I did discuss, uh, possibly having a, a second meeting in October as well. If need be, um, but I think that's, that's a, a good schedule, uh, and a good goal to have that, um. Public hearing in November at the planning commission level, um, and yes, this, uh, my next step would be to, to, um. Draft the language, uh, within the, the ordinance, the zoning ordinance text, it's text itself, uh, and you have that in, in a red line format. So you, you could see where things are supplemented, um, where things have changed, especially in the P U D, uh, section. Um, and then, uh, the, the zoning district, the, the new zoning district itself would be, you know, an all, all, all new section. Uh, but then there would be, uh, changes to the, uh. The, uh, C four resort district and. I think the rest would be focused on, on the new district.
Yeah, okay. Yes, we already have a public hearing going in our October meeting for the outdoor sidewalk. And use of public right away. And then we would then approve, or at least we would review, and if we approve of what you're proposing, we would then set a public meeting. For the November planning meeting for the zoning change. Then by December, just sort of regular, we hopefully will be doing something regarding sending short term rental over to. If not before then.
That's pretty vicious timeline too, but, uh, it's up to you.
That, I just said that's my goal.
Right, yeah, short term rentals might take a little longer than that, but I, uh, but to, to you, but on this project, so, uh, and I, I should, I apologize. I didn't explain this at, at the beginning, I think you were aware, uh, you had, uh, somewhat a discussion about it your last meeting or it came up, so. Um, the, the more, the city council, as you recall, the, the ordinances for the moratoriums allowed the city council to extend them. Um, by resolution, and so, um, you've all made great progress over several months on, on this, you're hard at work, you know, nothing wrong there. Um, but you just need a little bit more time, so the, the council did extend the moratorium through the end of December, um, but I think. Probably want to still aim to really hit that, I think, at this point, so, um. It's up to you if you want to have two meetings in October. If you wait to your regular meeting in October, um, and you want, there's, you know, a lot of changes that you want to make before you set a public hearing on it. Um, you're really not going to have any time to have a second meeting in October, uh, before I have to have that public hearing notice out because. The, the Monday after your, your next regular meeting is when I have to have the public hearing notice to the paper. Um, published that following Thursday, I have to hit a three week deadline for them to make the fifteen days of their publication schedule. So I guess the question for you would be, do you prefer to schedule an earlier special meeting in October to review draft changes? If you have changes, then Dave could bring them back to your regular meeting in October. Um, that does push Dave to get things done, uh, maybe a lot sooner than he was expecting, I don't know how much time something like this is going to take, so perhaps he. May have to advise on that, but. If you're pretty comfortable with the language that you discussed tonight, you're like, I, I think we're good, just putting it in an actual draft ordinance format, then.
If, if the language is what we review, we see. I would be comfortable just seeing like, just how it was like for the restaurant. And being comfortable with that being utilized as a recommendation for the period without having a second, a special meeting, but.
Personally, what I heard was that, and I include myself in this campaign, depending on how this all might fit together for the P U D, I think that's basic and I agree with it. From my perspective, I didn't hear anything from any of the commissioners that was in complete opposition to this before. And so I think personally, I, I'm comfortable moving forward, keeping the process, the draft, the stuff, the final. Ordinance review for us.
So you're fine, we're doing at your next regular meeting? Okay.
I think this way we'll pass it in our next meeting and we'll have something, we'll be able to get through what we want to do so you can make the.
Yeah, your next meeting, you would review the draft language, say, okay, yep, this is good, just schedule a public hearing on and.
Yep, yep. I don't see that.
Right.
The public hearing will be a second special meeting.
No. November. The idea was.
October scheduled in November, the special meeting, going to get his papers, all published.
But I think the idea was if we thought that there was going to be a lot of changes that may be required, what, what David prepares, we would need to have. A meeting to review it, in case you need to make another change, which you could have the public hearing by the, the date. But if we were kind of in consensus that. If this is written up in an ordinance form, then there's, there's minor changes, because if there was minor, we could still have the public hearing and then you. After the public hearing, you have the opportunity to do the final draft, maybe submit to. Council.
Sounds like plan B.
I think it's in this, some, Chris, and she's, and they did kind of pine on that, and like, if you change your. Ordinance dramatically from what you had, your public hearing on, well, you need to have another public hearing on it. He started getting into.
Well, one, I don't really see a lot of changes that would be necessary, I just think that there's something good about, that's the whole purpose also.
Well, absolutely.
So we'll proceed with the normal meeting from October. The idea that we're going to review it, and if it looks good to us, we would approve it for. Public hearing the following.
Yes. Also, just out of. So what else will we be mentioning that in October?
Um, yeah, so you have. Well, obviously the outdoor dining public hearing, uh, will be on your October meeting. Um, we had a conditional zoning request come in, uh, we still take a look at that, I saw Dave sent some emails on that. David, that will be part of our discussion, uh, but that's, we'll be, right now is planned to be on your, your next meeting agenda, that would be a, a public hearing. Um, as well, and then, uh, we had a, uh, restaurants, uh, a, a current restaurant that didn't have special land use approval. Kind of an interesting timeline and story, but, um, that submitted for special land use approval, um. For the restaurants, uh, so that'll be a public hearing and site plan review.
Short term rental will be. Will be presented to.
Yeah, and, and perhaps sort, and, and, you know, perhaps that, that, um, you know, will weigh in on. The fact that you have a heavier agenda for your regular meeting, perhaps that, that weighs on whether or not maybe they think of a joint meeting with the council, discuss short term rentals. But it also depend on the council's schedule, um, and workload too, that's, it's pretty heavy right now, so.
I just can't imagine.
Yeah, your, your short term rental is not going to be at a, your short term rentals next month aren't going to be a public hearing or anything like that, that would be simply be a. Working session to have some discussion with you folks about what you want.
Basically, it's just going to be that document updated by McKenna being delivered to. With the, with the recommendations, that just starts our review of the recommendations.
We will eventually have a public hearing.
Once we make decisions if we're making zoning changes, for putting things into the ordinances that need.
Right.
Which is why Ryan's telling me that December is not going to be when it goes to council. Yes, there'll be one for the. Uh, the waterfront, waterfront one occur. The October one, we're just reviewing the ordinance, almost like how we review the ordinance tonight for the walkway. And then November will have the waterfront public hearing. The October will have the public hearing for the restaurant use of right away, and then because there's other two. But if they do, in a search mission with Ryan, may require public hearings, the restaurant one, instead of public hearing, is that just?
Yeah, and, and, I mean, going forward to the discussion that, you know. Sorry, but, no, I mean, i- if, if short term rentals are, maybe they need their own, you know, special meetings to, to focus on them, um, you know, so we, we can evaluate that.
Hey David, when you're rewriting the ordinance, and I know you made, you made reference to it, um, in your recommendation. You know, if you recall, we had this chart that we had, you had sent out to us, which showed the permitted use, special use and not permitted by each of the zones. And now that will be updated in that final draft that you'll be preparing, correct?
Uh, yes, that, that's correct, and, and that will, it'll primarily be for our new waterfront preservation district. But, but we'll have the, the list of, uh, permitted and special land uses, and, uh, we'll be using some different terms and, and define them all as well.
When everyone responded, because again, I have my response, but I have not seen everybody else's responses. Were they consistent enough that you believe that you can say, okay, home businesses, all of them should be special land uses? Home occup, home occupations permitted, I mean, it's. Was it consistent, you felt across all the commissioners who responded with what they felt they were? Or, because we never went through like each of these line items, I mean, like we talked about, some of them just being removed, you know, amusement parks and recreational services. Your recommendation was that should remove it, I said, I totally agree. When you looked at everybody's responses, were they consistent enough that we should not have any issues when that comes out in October? But people looking saying, wait, I never, I never agreed, that should be a permitted use versus a special use. Because since that's going to be out there, we haven't seen that yet. I just don't want to have that come up in October and everybody will be going, oh, now we can't keep it on a hearing.
Yeah, I, I don't think there were, there were any major outliers, I think, uh, the comments were, were, were generally consistent. And, uh, if, if there are a few highlighted uses that we, that we could, you know, we could certainly discuss those, uh, individually if there were, you know, handful that were.
And maybe Ryan, you can tell me that if we were to see that on the October nineteenth agenda, and if we said, oh, I think that. Bed and breakfast or something needed to be, instead of permitted, a special land use, that is a simple enough change that we could make. At that meeting and still hit the money dead. For him publishing the, um, public here. Okay.
Yeah, because of all the, yeah, the public hearing notice be more of a summary of your proposed changes.
In, in, uh, Mr. Chairman, one other option too, um, if the notices have to go out on, uh, Monday, the twenty third. The, the fifteen days is actually going to be, um, November first, so we, we could put the notice out. It, it referenced all the sections that are going to be changed, and then we could possibly still meet the week of the twenty third if there, if you felt the need to do it. So there'd be a little bit of overlap between the time, your newspaper deadline. Um, and when we would have the final version prepared for the public, which would need to be available by November first. So November, November versus fifteen days.
So that could be a fallback, we meet on the nineteen, if everything was clean, there's no reason, but if on the nineteen, we felt that we needed. Changes, we could call a special meeting the following week potentially.
Yes, yes, I think maybe the public hearing could say something, um, to the nature of, um, the, the ordinance and map would, will be available. You, uh, up, uh, at, at November first at, or, or earlier, so we could say something to where there may be. Uh, you know, a time that, that, that will be available at the office and it'll be available no later than November first.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to, yeah, I mean, a notice would, because I have to have it on the twenty third, it's going to publish on the twenty sixth, which is three weeks prior to your. Your meeting, problem with waiting the following week would be only a fourteen day notice essentially, so. Yeah, as long as there's no concerns with the fact that the notice might be in the paper on the twenty sixth with. An indication that the information would be able, available on the first.
Our November meeting is the sixteen, currently, twenty third is Thanksgiving, correct?
That includes. Includes my, um. Oh, yeah, that's, all good.
Great session.
That concludes the new business for this evening, communications, I didn't have any in the packet, I'm not aware of any. Report of the officers, so Ryan, typically you have like a activity report.
Yeah, you know, I apologize, Mr. Chair, I, I had that on the agenda and I, I forgot to include in your package, so I'll, I'll. I just prepared an updated one for council for Monday, so I'll, I'll send a copy of that to.
And we can see it through the council, I mean, I, I just, I just wanted to note that it was on here that. And it's fine, which will move us to the final public comment, which could be on anything. Um, since there's no one in the room or on Zoom, I am going to assume we have no public comments, so we will close that out.
I don't know if it's leaving us nobody.
Yeah, I mean.
I bet anybody who's not public.
Very important to me.
I misspoke there, definitely. And then outside of what I consider part of our group, uh. And then that leads us to down to the commissioners' comments, if there's any, anybody has anything to add at this time?
Just real quick, okay.
No, go ahead.
Okay, just real quick, I, I wanted to, this short term rental, I participated or watched it as part of all of them. It's really good, and I, I really felt like some of my positions did move a little bit through it, so I thought it was a good, uh, presentation of all the info and. Look forward to working for it, good job.
I would just say thank you for the dialogue tonight, it's real pleasure to serve on this commission, I just really appreciate the professional dialogue and the expertise and. I want to thank the city staff for putting on both sides of the paper, thank you.
Amen.
Using good paper, it's good paper too.
With that, we have a motion to adjourn. Second? All those in favor say yes.